Well.
Good morning and welcome to the June 25th Stat- Board of Commissioners meeting. And we have with us a special guest, Josephine, okay, honorary commissioner for a time, okay, and Deb Shore, Commissioner Deb Shore, and Commissioner Rick Vest. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. We have some special guests in the audience. So let's get on with the agenda. Mr. Clerk.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Hmm? Oh, yes. They say pledge of allegiance. Will you please join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My goodness, on such a special day like this, I'm losing my mind. Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 is the oath of office, administration of the oath of office to Krista Yocum, Honorable John Colburn presiding.
Okay, please come forward.
And if you would raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. I, Krista Yocum.
I, Krista Yocum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of county commissioner.
Of the office of county commissioner.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor I- nor am I a member.
Nor am I a member.
Of any political party.
Of any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates.
That advocates.
The overthrow.
The overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am (cough)- as I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member.
Nor become a member.
Of any political party.
Of any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to introduce some of your folks?
Oh, sure, I would love to introduce my family. So you've already met Josephine, who does plan to become president, so this is just a step on the path.
Okay.
But my husband, John, is here, my mother, Sherry, and my four sons, John Junior, Jay, Matt, Pat, and Topper. And some of my grandchildren are here. We have Katie, who is the oldest, Josephine is the youngest, Safronia, Dakota, Ethan, and Keegan are here. And I appreciate them all getting up on a summer morning in time to be here. Oh, and my daughter-in-law, Joanna. I'm sorry. And my sister-in-law, Lori, is here too. And many friends in the audience, so I appreciate all of this support.
Very good. You have quite a- quite a gathering, okay?
And you have a seat.
Yes, please have a seat. And now you can get on with the work.
Indeed.
Agenda item 1, minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any changes? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three, your claims, approval of all claims processed through June 25th, 2019.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number four, consent items. These are retuned business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of utility permits with no cost to the county for the following. Number 1823, allowing Windstream Nebraska to install new fiber optic cable under the west right-of-way of South 112th Street from A to O Street. Number 1821, to allow Windstream Nebraska to install new fiber optic cable in the west right-of-way adjacent to Southwest 14th Street from West Woodstock Road to West Leoma Marine Lane. Amendments to the following contracts. C-17-893 with Ray O'Hara and Company for annual supply, county corrections, uniform accessories. C-18-470 with Stericycle for annual service infectious waste pickup and disposal. C-18-157 with WellPath for medical care services for the adult detention facility. Grant contracts funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 with the following. Asian Community and Cultural Center, an amount of $25,601 for the UZETI Youth Club Program. Boys and Girls Clubs of Lincoln, Lancaster County, an amount of $25,000 for the Teen Outreach Program. Girl Scouts Spirit of Nebraska, an amount of $8,500 for the Juvenile Justice Outreach Program. Hope Spoke, an amount of $25,000 for the Pilots of Change Program. Grant contracts funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 with the following. Cedars Youth Services, an amount of $254,463 for the Emergency Shelter Program. Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders County, an amount of $131,540 for the Basic and Emergency Needs Program. United Way of Lincoln and Lancaster County, an amount of $7,215 for the Service Point Food Distribution and Grants Management Software Program.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is new business, 5A is a resolution instituting eminent domain proceedings against Aganvest LLC.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please come forward.
Yocum?
No.
No.
We have.
We- just a moment before discussion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Donia Pedgram-Ciders. I am the owner of Aganvest. And I am in no way asking for any special privilege to have this domain happen, but I have more property that is tied to this through the self-bypass. I have developed, I've actually got together a team of Lincoln community leaders to help me with this. And today I'm asking if I could just have a 30-day extension for this. So I just got this information on Friday when I met with Alex Olson and Pam Dingman at the engineer's office. I have had not had my counsel, really the 120-page document. So I feel that I would like to have, if it was all possible, 30-day extension to properly review this and have my attorney review this, and then come back to you, and you can proceed what you need to do.
Well, I thank you for your information.
Thank you.
Yes. Engineer Dingman?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Just to add a little bit of clarity, I have put a track map showing the location of this proposed action on the overhead, the top of the page, and I guess if I was gonna rotate a little bit. So we should always have north be up as engineers, that's just one of my OCD issues I'll apologize in advance for. I have South 82nd Street, and then I have Bennett Road. And so while we're grading South 82nd Street, we have this piece of Bennett Road that has a big hill, has a little bit of sight distance issue. It has never been graded. It's dirt. And so with the exception that as we get over the other half mile, we have graded and gravelled some of that. So while we're here, and we- I continue to talk to you about the efficiency of doing projects kind of all at once. I believe that it would be best for us to go and take this sight distance issue out and then gravel the rest of this road. And so that's why we've added this to the project. And I guess from there, I'd just like to ask if there's any questions.
Mr. Shore?
What did a 30-day delay impact other parts of the project?
Dramatically. I don't have our call log with me today, although I would be happy to supply my call log to the commissioners. We have reached out a number of times on this piece of land. We have answered questions in regards to this piece of land. We have told the landowner, who happens to be here, that we will continue to have discussions with her and that we can settle anytime prior to going to court on this. And of course, that would not be the goal, but that's what we're trying to get.
What's the- I'm sorry, I apologize. What's the timeframe you're looking at for beginning or working on this project?
We have already started work on this project. We've already started work on South 82nd Street. So we're- it is a two-mile project, so we're currently not working in this location, but we- we- we do obviously need to get started on it.
And this is along the Bennett Road stretch that we're- the property that we're with-
So again, I have put the track map up on the overhead. It's a little difficult to explain the geometry of it. Typically, we have 66-foot right-of-way. Some years ago, we actually bought a 100-foot right-of-way in the South 82nd Street corridor. In the meantime, and this is what happens in engineering when we have plans that sit in our office for a long extended period of time and they're not built, engineering design standards have changed. So we needed to adjust some of the slopes on South 82nd Street to meet new current design standards. And that's why we're coming in adjacent to South 82nd Street, and we just have a little tiny strip on South 82nd Street that we are looking to acquire, as well as it always takes us just a little bit more room at intersections, so a little bit of a piece in an intersection here. And then this, of course, is that hill being cut down and the embankment to tie back into the hill.
Mr. Shore?
This might be a question for the county attorney. The item of force is a resolution instituting eminent domain proceedings. There is still a time for settlement or any issues to be discussed prior- there's- if I heard you right, Pam.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. This resolution would authorize us to move forward and file the proceedings. The proceedings will have to be scheduled with the county court. That will take a little bit of time in order to get a board of appraisers set, so there's going to be some delay. This isn't going to be an immediate take. We're going to have to go through a whole procedure, and there's- there will be time to resolve this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5B is a resolution directing the county engineer to conduct a study and the planning department to write a report regarding vacating portions of Saltilla Road, more particularly described in Exhibits A and B and located in Lancaster County.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. I think that the engineer Dingman is here.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So today I bring forward a vacating, this little piece of Saltilla that I've put up on the overhead. It is shaded in yellow. This is just a little stub street. Saltilla actually doesn't even go through on the west end, and so what we're trying to do is, this is a little piece of street, two blocks long, that has really had some- it's adjacent to Spring Creek Prairie. It really has had some activities go on, such as illegal dumping, and people have used this to illegally access the prairie, and so what we're trying to do is fix a problem that we have in this area that is mutually beneficial to all.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is a memorandum of agreement with the Nebraska Office of Secretary of State. The state will provide certain network security services to the county at no cost to the county.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
This is an agreement with the Secretary of State. About two years ago, Congress passed and provided some additional funding for election security for all states, and the Secretary of State's office has chosen to provide to the largest counties an Albert Monitor to be placed on our system to be able to indicate any hacking or anything into our system. So we've been working with Information Services and Jim Anderson's here, if you have any specific questions about this, but there's no charge to the county. It's just a matter of some funding from the federal government came down to the state, and the state is working with us to increase our security, and I believe it'll be beyond this- this- beyond just elections, it'll be able to help other agencies as well.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5D is a contract with Interspace Studios to provide consoling services for the county assessor's office. The cost to county is not to exceed $13,000.
Rob Ogden, County Assessor, Register of Deeds. This is a contract that Bob Wallach connected with us as far as planning for the furniture arrangements and so forth that tie into the remodeling of our office. We do have money in our budget for this.
Okay.
Any questions?
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is designation of Benjamin Rogers as entity administrator for SAM.
Move approval?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5F is a state grand award contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Lancaster County Community Aid Enhancement Program. The commission will provide $50,000, and Cedars will provide a match share of $10,000 for a total project cost of $60,000. The grant period is from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is a state grand award contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Lancaster County Community Aid Program. The commission will provide $817,655, and Lancaster County will provide a match share of $90,851 for a total project cost of $908,506. The grant period is from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Move approval? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5H is a contract with Engineer Technologies Inc. to provide professional engineering services for design and replacement of rooftop HVAC units. The cost to county is not to exceed $20,000.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. We would ask the board to approve this contingent on receipt of insurance. We still haven't received a couple endorsements that we're waiting for.
I would move approval contingent upon receipt of the insurance documents requested.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5I are agreements with the following provided, the county engineer's structural consultation related to county bridges. The term of agreement- agreements are two years from the date of execution. The cost to county for each agreement shall not exceed $20,000, and this is with Manullian Wagner and Associates and Spies Lewis Engineers.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So as the commissioners are aware, we no longer have a bridge engineer on staff. He resigned a couple months ago. We are having trouble replacing him and currently don't even have any applicants, to my knowledge. So what we have done is, we have set in place these two contracts on an hourly basis, so if we need some detailed structural engineering, because I am not a structural engineering expert, that we can go ahead and seek those- those engineering, fill that engineering void for the structural engineer or the bridge engineer. And so that's- that's what these contracts are for. It doesn't- it's not an intent to use them to the max, just an intent to be able to have an hourly contract in place for things that we need.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. With respect to item I-2, we would ask that that be approved contingent upon receipt of insurance. We're still waiting for a couple endorsements on that also.
Do we want to do these separately then?
Yeah, I'll do them separately. I will move approval of item I-1.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item I-1. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
I would move approval of item I-2 based on the contingency that we do receive the insurance documents requested.
Second. We have a motion and a second relating to item I-2. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is J. This is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and the county engineer to award a contract to Straight Line Striping Inc. for pavement marking. The total contract amount is $125,479.20.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Every year, we try to refresh the- some of the striping, not all of the striping, on our approximately 270 miles of major arterial roads on the section lines. This is this year's paving contract. You may notice when you see those stripes that they now, the last few years, have had a glass bead, a recycled glass bead, mixed in with the paint. It makes it kind of difficult to deal with. However, it does make it super easy to see, and it's very reflective when you're out there on our roads. And so the map that I have placed up on the overhead shows the areas that we are proposing with this contract to do pavement striping.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and the county engineer to award a contract to Highway Improvement Inc. for a crack sealing by two-manus surfacing. The total amount of the contract is $274,032.32.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I have placed an exhibit on the overhead that shows the area that we are proposing crack sealing, although we, as engineers, refer to it as bituminous surfacing, more commonly known as asphalt. So asphalt cracks, we know that if we seal those cracks and they don't get moisture in them, we are, you know, super extending the life of our asphalt, and so that's why we crack seal. We actually do some of our own crack sealing, but this is contract crack sealing, just in order to make sure that we get as much of that asphalt sealed as possible.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Anything to, as you say, superextend the life of our roadways?
Which I'm super excited about.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5L is a contract with Pavers Inc. for asphalt surfacing and paving. The work is completed on or before November 1st, 2019. The cost to county is up to $3,63,765.26.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So I have put an exhibit up on the overhead showing the areas of asphalt that we are resurfacing. And what this is, is this is a process a little different than I talked about with the commissioners last week. This is a mill two inches, and we're either milling two inches off and we're refilling This is a mill two inches and we're either milling two inches off and we're refilling it with two inches or milling two inches off and we're refilling it with three inches, depending on the condition of the asphalt. One of the other things with this contract that I would like everyone to be aware of is that we do have an interlocal with Berth to go ahead and mill through their village where they have paid us for that work. And we also have an interlocal agreement with Malcolm to go ahead and do, do asphalt overlay through Malcolm, which they are also going to reimburse us for. And so these are ways that we help the villages really extend their dollars because we're buying a large quantity of asphalt and this helps them pay a lesser mobilization charge and get a more efficient asphalt price. And so, or bituminous pavement, when we like to use our fancy words. And so I'm excited about this year. Sometimes these interlocal agreements take a long time to negotiate for the villages, but I really think they're best for all the taxpayers and they give the people who live in the village an efficiency in their, in their tax dollar use.
And does this also super extend the life of our road?
Super to the max. If I can use both those words in a sentence and still retain my engineering license. You know, we really hope to see the asphalt overlay last somewhere in between 10 and 15 years. We have been catching up on that, of course, the last couple of years. My concern remains that winters like last winter are really hard on our asphalt. And what, where we don't want to be is to where we're patching potholes. And so these are things, maintaining our slabs, that really are efficient for the taxpayers and extend the life.
I would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Five M is Lancaster County Board of Committee Assignments.
I move approval.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none on agenda may do so at this time.
And seeing no one come forward, please proceed.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 27th, 2019 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 at 9 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach up 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for adjournment. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
The Board of Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you. And now we will go on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Addition a copy of all written material to discuss the day's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Are there any changes? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules. This includes additions and deductions and the taxless corrections based on the Nebraska Department of Revenue's recertified taxable values for Black Hills Energy for tax years 2009 through 2017.
Good morning, Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register of Deeds. Just wanted to bring to your attention item two here. This is some ongoing appeals of Black Hills Energy Central Assessed Valuation litigation between the Department of Revenue and Black Hills. It was finally settled recently and this redistributed value was determined. So it does affect tax years going all the way back to 2009. The net impact is positive revenue, positive tax dollars to the counties and the other subdivisions. Just roughly about $268,000 in additional taxes will be paid by Black Hills. Of that roughly $36,000 coming to Lancaster County.
Just out of curiosity, are other counties involved in the litigation?
Anywhere Black Hills would have been servicing.
But wasn't unique to us. It's statewide. Okay. I will move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
Second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is 425 filing reported destroyed real property from Clarice Loomis.
This is, this filing is as a result of recently passed legislation that allows, under catastrophic circumstances, calamity, I believe is the language in statute, due to tornado, flood, kind of act of God type of occurrences, that taxpayers who have suffered that loss can apply to have their value reassessed as of the date of the calamity. So this property is the tornado that came through and took the Dairy Suite out. This is the Dairy Suite property. It, it's really the Board of Equalization's decision on how to react to this. I guess if you want a recommendation from our office, in this particular case, it's pretty straightforward. The value of the improvements that were destroyed was $4,600. So I guess a solid recommendation would be to remove that improvement value from this parcel and adjust the value accordingly. I will point out, it's, it's a unique situation. There isn't a lot of value attributable to the buildings and there's even a house on there that added zero value because it's a commercial zone property with just under two acres. So the total improvement value that was destroyed, $4,600, and that would be our advice to remove that.
That's based on the date of the weather?
It's as, you basically reassess it as of the date of the destruction. So the storm blows through and then you look at it. In this case, it's really simple. The building was gone. You will see some others potentially where there may be some fire damage, where there's some residual value left in the, in the structure. But that's, and the, the statute says if it happens between January 1 and July 1, they can apply by July 15th. So we'll, we'll be seeing a handful of these, I suspect. We're fortunate in our county didn't suffer the damage of some of the others with massive flooding.
Okay.
And then one more question. Then each one, you're, it sounds like you're going to be evaluating case by case to see how much damage was actually done.
We'll work with, you know, as the applications come in, they come into the clerk's office and our office as well. We'll kind of paint the picture for you and give you, you know, a rough recommendation on what our advice would be.
I would.
Oh, did you have? Well, since this is the first one that we're doing like this, so we are just accepting the report of destroyed property or we're directing you to reevaluate, what would be the correct motion?
I, Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the board takes an action to set a new value based on whatever information you want to use. It doesn't, it isn't us, it isn't us just saying use that value. We'll give you some, some advice if you choose to use it. That's your call. But I think the board sets a new value, just like a protest in the typical protest process.
So is this basically, are you just asking to remove the $46,000?
They're, they're asking for it to be readjusted based on the storm. Our recommendation would be the portion of the value attributable to the building should be removed to reflect that.
That's right.
And that would be, that would be a reduction of $4,600. And that would.
Thousand six.
Yeah, and the land value is $317,200. So it's not a significant adjustment.
So basically what the, the motion would be, would be to simply remove the value of the, of the building?
Right. And, and then the total value would be the land building, the land value that we currently have, which is $317,200.
Right, the, the board essentially is changing the assessed value as of the date of destruction. So you can do that by accepting the recommendation of the county assessor.
Okay. I will move we adjust the value of this property based upon the date of destruction upon the recommendation of the county assessor.
Second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
$317,200, just to be clear, would be the new total value.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, none on agenda may do so at this time.
And seeing none, let's move forward. I move we adjourn.
I second.
We have a motion in a second for adjournment. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Board of Equalization is adjourned.